Let's stand together for our pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. If you could pause for a moment of silence and I would only ask you to think about, oh, at least this. Dr. Toll served the school board a long time at Berkeley and he has passed some months ago. It's good to be mindful of him, his contribution to our community. Oh no solace. Thank you very much. Well, you would think I have this memorized, wouldn't you? Welcome to our meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there is time for public comment. Prior to our action items on the agenda, we asked the speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Sir, a motion to adopt the agenda this evening.
Sure, Mr. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McCool, any comment? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. Disordered, Ms. Campbell, our board liaison.
Good evening, students in the school board. As the semester comes to an end, students have been working very hard to complete any missing assignments and final testing in my tab. Many students are completing their ASLs this week and probably next week. The Spring Musical was announced earlier this week. Our director, Ms. Platt, announced the musical will be Beetlejuice, which is a comedy with a spooky, weird undertone based off of a classic movie. Our NHS chapter has been going around classroom to classroom every Tuesday with a hot chocolate and coffee cart as a holiday gift to our teachers. We did this usually once a month, but for December, we decided to do it every week. Our Leo Club has recently finished their yearly lioness, or sorry, lioness project, where they make blankets to donate to two different chapters of the lioness. Lioness project, it's like blankets for kids in need. It's colored lioness because of like peanuts, like chocolate brown.
Oh, lioness.
Yes. But I always say lioness because I think of Leo.
That's a good decision.
This year, I think we made 25 blankets, which is great because last year we only made 17. So it's big.
That's great.
The winter sports seasons have recently started. There's been a few basketball games, girls and boys, no wrestling yet. But hopefully some good news over the winter break when they have their first meet. And they're starting off on the right foot. As the semester comes to an end and students prepare for the next semester, we can look back and appreciate all the fun we've had for the past few months. Celebrate the end of the year, we've had a holiday spirit week and it'll be next week. And the spirit days and themes were selected by the students and our CAF. During the month of December, our school has implemented a cell phone challenge run through December to decide whether or not we'll be able to use our phones during lunch next semester and to continue on. I don't really know how this has been going, but hopefully good. And finally, I would like to thank all of you for having me as a student liaison this past year. It really feels like it's flown by. I feel like I just got brought to be a liaison. Thank you for the opportunity and to tell you the concerns and happenings of this event. Can I come here?
Great job, Mary.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, there's also going to be a pride show for the high school at the end of this semester.
I think, I don't know. I'm pretty sure we're going to have it. There was talk of my students of it being canceled, but I don't, I'm not really sure. I think we're still having it as far as I know.
Hey, well, thanks for serving.
Thank you.
Student body while you're serving. I guess we get a new liaison in January.
Usually that's when we announce somebody. But if you'd like to stay on through January, that's typical practice where it's sort of like a passing of the baton.
Okay.
For a new person. And if you have any of your friends who you think would be good candidates, we'd love to hear from you too. Thank you so much.
Thanks for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, donations.
So we have an exciting donation totaling $9,174 from the Lions Club to support the Spring Workforce Solutions classes. So $43.74 for the Spring Workforce Solutions and then the Spring Trades Academy. So two separate donations of $4,800 for the Trades Academy. So that's amazing, supporting students with their. That's their tuition? Yes.
We're paying the whole thing.
It's amazing. It keeps the cost to students at no more than $100 for that program. Amazing. Thank you, Lions Club.
It's wonderful.
I'll send it that way.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Sir, a motion to adopt the minutes from our November meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, the motion was by, is there a second?
Second.
Sir, for Mr. Grove, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. Disordered, Mr. Grove, do you have an opportunity to review bills?
I did and everything looks to be in order. We're right about 48% where it should be. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda contains an approval of donations, approval to pay the bills, attendance report and a homeschool report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
And motion for Mr. Ubin, is there a second?
Second.
Sir, for Ms. Vine, I'm all in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. Disordered, Dr. Grimsley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first item, as Ms. Campbell lovely teed up for us, is the cell phone policy discussion. You may have seen the November policy update from V S B A. A lot of school boards and superintendents were waiting to see what V S B A would do with the executive order 33. Typically, when there is a change in legislation or code that impacts school policy, V S B A vets it through their legal department and then releases for the school boards. They did put together a guidance document for schools, but however, they did not create a new policy because the executive order is not codified in law. So their position was that the computer use policies that you have can be used to enact that, but school boards have the complete authority to enact a policy as stringent and consistent with executive order 33 as possible. So what we've done then, taking that, because this board historically does not adopt a local policy outside of V S B A policy, we've created a regulation that puts into practice, it's like a subset of a policy that basically enacts as an administrative policy on how we deal with the cell phones. So before I get into the regulation though, I've invited the principals here to update you on current practice, how that's been going and present some data. So Principal Whissinger, do you want to start with the elementary update?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I want to say probably it was right after COVID, probably 2021, we kind of implemented a cell phone policy. Fortunately, the elementary school, our primary kids, it has never been a concern. It's our sixth and seventh graders where they start to bring, you know, cell phones to school and have them out. And so we have had just a storage where they have to be in their backpacks. They can have them, they cannot be on at all during the school day. If teachers see them, their first violation is that they give them a verbal warning to put the phone away. The second time, the phone does come with them to the office. I meet with them or Mrs. Lobart and I meet with them, we talk with them and then we hold the phone until the end of the day. It goes back to the student. The third attempt we have, or the third violation, we do keep the phone and have parents come in, pick up the phone, talk about how it's distracting them during their instructional time. And then we do encourage them that, you know, if it's not an emergency, maybe it's not best that they have them, you know, in school at that time. I can say last year, I think I took three phones. One was actually held for a parent. This year, we've only had one phone that we've had to take and it was just a first event. So this has worked very, very well for us and, you know, I'm hopeful that it will also lend itself to help when our seventh graders go up to the high school as well because I know that, you know, one thing we are, we are working on is an incentive this year for our middle school kids to, we haven't implemented it yet, we were going to do it semester two, to possibly get like 10 minutes during lunch to be on their phones because they aren't meeting in like 20 minutes and they have that 30 minute lunch. So that was kind of an incentive. We haven't rolled it out yet just because with the, you know, the new cell phone policy and everything that we're talking about. But that was something that was on the table for us to kind of discuss with them too and get some teacher input on that as well. So, but yeah, that's elementary school in a nutshell. But it was worked well for us and we don't have to do a lot of, you know, reinforcement with that because they really do follow the rules in our sixth and seventh grade with it. So, yeah.
Good to hear.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Whissinger?
I think so.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
You got to head the ball on that one.
And now, Dr. Boynton, you want to give us an update about the high school? Thank you for coming all the way back from your conference to talk to the board today.
So as was shared by our student liaison, we have been conducting a cell phone challenge this month, basically putting the onus back on to the students to choose which option we will have starting in January. As you can imagine, our high schoolers have particularly more of an inclination to want to do what they want to do and they're used to having their cell phones constantly with them. So, and so basically with permission, we decided to self phone challenge. And I can honestly say that right now, and hopefully the three young ladies in the back will not divulge it, we're one week in, two weeks to go, but we are looking like option one may be the route that we're able to go. So here's just some other documentation. So one of the challenges that we feel, we have at the high school is that when you have a student that is attached, and I'm going to use that word very purposely, attached to their cell phone, when an adult tries to intervene and ask them to disconnect, sometimes the immediate response to the adult is not always appropriate. And many of the adults are uncomfortable asking or asking to take the phone or. So to remove that, we decided to kind of follow the same model that Winchester City Schools is doing where we now have a cell phone report form and the teacher doesn't even have to address the students. We have encouraged them to address the students at the beginning of each class just as they're telling the students to sit down, get ready, put your phone in your backpack or make sure your phone is in your backpack. But again, it's more just because we want it to be their protocol, their procedure for the day. But if the student has the phone in their back pocket, if the student has their phone out, if the student is trying to use it under the desk, I've had every version so far. The teacher can just silently fill out the form and then we get alerts and we can track it. You can see right there, currently right now, we have three prize winners. Three students out of 320 that are repeat offenders multiple, multiple, multiple times. And so all three of those students have been met with more than once. One of the students has already lost their phone for the day. And as we move through this, we will continue to elevate that. The chances are that at least two of them will not have their phone during the school day when we return in January. They will be required to turn it in in the morning and they'll pick it up at the end of the day. They're struggling, they're struggling. But as you can see, the rest of the building is doing a really nice job. And the comments that the teachers have been putting in is like, this is our first offense. When asked to put away, no issues. So for the majority of the students, it's unintended. They're just, you know, they're checking, they're, you know, it's a natural instinct as it is with adults. So for the most part, the data is very, very promising. This shows you, it also tells us the date, we track the dates that the reports are coming in. So for example, we had a little bit of a lull and then it picked up again on the ninth. It also shows you which grade levels. So you can see that, I think our assumption was that eighth grade would be our heavy hitter, but it's absolutely not. It's our ninth graders. Our eighth graders are actually doing a really good job. So again, this is also great data so that, and part of that, the ninth grade is that the student that has 10 already happens to be a ninth grader. So it kind of like messes up a bit. But again, this is data that, it also tracks the teachers that are making the reports. So I can see which teachers are being hyper vigilant and maybe which teachers are being a little bit more conservative or are just not willing to fill out the form. But we have not yet got feedback from the adults. I was going to wait until we were well into this month and get feedback on how they are, are they liking doing the form? Would they prefer it a different way? But it has definitely removed, I've not had one adult yet get frustrated or have a student be inappropriate with them and we have not been called to any classrooms. So I think for the most part, there's always going to be those extremes, but for the most part, this is, it's proving to be a very productive way of handling the situation. And so how is the challenge been going? So again, I'm pretty confident that we're going to option one. The students have blown me away with how conscientious and willing they are to step up to the challenge. And then, as I said, we'll address it on an individual case by case basis. This is, it's very clear with the reporting that we have a small, small fraction of the students that are really struggling to removing. And then we've got some, we've got some things that we're going to work on in that regard as well. So, thank you.
Some questions for Dr. Boynton? Seems like having the form is a good idea because this wouldn't be as disruptive to the classroom time.
It prevents that back and forth, that power struggle that sometimes can arise.
Excellent data. It's very, very helpful. And what we were talking about, and Mr. Mills heard this in a V S B A conference session we were at, we're at Hopewell that, you can, you're fine. Hopewell County was implementing the yonder pouches in a very, very secure model, but the manpower and the oversight and the supervision and the walking through metal, and the money, metal detectors and searching everything in the backpacks. I'm like, oh my gosh, could you imagine?
It's expensive.
Our kiddos, really?
It's extremely expensive.
It's extremely expensive. But we talked about the digital detox that Commit to Be Fit launched and we've been talking about it more and more for students. So Commit to Be Fit, and I know Jackie Teedrick as the coordinator already, has met with Dr. Boynton and they're continuing to collaborate on in the, as part of our cell phone policy regulation is an educational component as well, along the same lines as the digital detox. So really teaching kids and empowering them to understand what this device is, how it's designed, why the, you know, even the lighting on the screen. And those things are made to addict you. Did you know that? And this is how it works. And here's, so it's going to be an instructional component about empowering our youth to understand the health risks to it and empower them to take control of it because there are very simple things that you can do in settings. And those of you who took the digital detox challenge got to see some of those through Commit to Be Fit. So we're going to launch that again in a more instructional focus, but it's a tier one intervention for all high school students so that we'll all get that. Here's how, here's what you do. They get to log their number of pickups as well as their screen time and we'll collect that each month just to try to get that metric to come down. And see, and they themselves can also see it. And it's very eye opening when you take that data down on yourself. So it's interesting. So that'll be a part of it.
That was a really interesting class and I have to jump in because the thing that became evident to me that I really was not that aware of is this idea that it is an addiction and it has to be handled similarly. Culpepper, by the way, did you say Culpepper did the pouches?
They did, yes.
So they just invested in our deployment of pouches. The pouches have a magnetic seal on the top of them. They, they're fabric and I don't think they're Faraday bags. I think they're just a fabric plot with a magnet bag. And of course, the Hopewell briefing told us there's lots of ways to get around that, right? You can cut the bottom out of the bag apparently. And then they have to buy a lot of extra bags because bags get lost and busted and all sorts of things. You can buy the magnet on Amazon. So there's, there's a lot of clever things going on to get around the bag. Fascinating thing in the class was that when everything was over and Shannon brought up educating students about the addiction or how to break this thing or be knowledgeable about the device that you're holding on to and what it's doing to you, it seemed like the entire room, instead of paying attention to the front, was now focused on Shannon Grisling and finding out, what did you do? And how can we have a smart approach to this whole thing? So I think what we're doing is novel and a good approach.
It's common sense.
It might seem common, but.
No, I'm saying it's common sense to include students in the whole process. It's not just coming down and saying, all right, everybody put them away and that's the end of that deal. It doesn't work that way.
I was just going to say it's actually uncommon. And one of the things they said to us too was that the brain of a teenager is not capable of managing this. It hasn't matured enough to know how to handle this type of device and what it can do to you. So, but it, I found it fascinating that everything stopped and was focused on, hey, what are you doing? Red Bank County? So this, this educational approach, I think, is good for everybody and it's respectful of everybody and helpful, so.
And it's based in very strong theory called the health belief model that when you understand the risks associated with something, you're more likely then to make positive changes to your health habits. So to do that, you need to educate about the risks and how those work. And our students are more than capable, obviously, as Dr. Boynton's data shows, of taking control of this and being empowered to be a part of their trajectory and their health habits and forming those healthy habits. When they graduate here, they're still going to have those. When they leave our building, they still have them. So how can they safeguard themselves? And they're amazing, intelligent, incredible students that really can do a great job.
Whatever it was we did in that training, it'd be nice to have something online that's available to everybody. So, you know, you can be trained, how do I turn those notifications off? So I can just go and see all of the points that were made because the rest of us are having similar struggles, I'm sure.
Absolutely. It's very eye opening.
You go try to take a phone away from a 12-year-old and you're going to have a beast on your hands, right? Because that addiction is there and it's like working with an addict, for sure. It's a real problem.
So I did link the policy page from V S B A that does have the resources there. There are some great resources linked. And then we have our own regulation that we've put together. That's an administrative policy connected regulation that reiterates what our computer use agreement and our code of conduct says that we strongly discourage students from even bringing cell phones to school and that they are prohibited from being used during instructional time. And it gives the authority to the principal to be responsive to the data in the buildings to be able to make decisions about appropriate times outside of instruction time that they may be used. For instance, like lunch period or maybe a designated time that they're doing something in instruction or in activity like looking at their data in settings during a seminar class where they all have to take it out to look and track. So it gives them the authority to be able to do that. And then it just outlines the definitions of those. School buses, we do have a standalone regulation in our transportation department guidelines for, on buses. And then prohibited activities that are also outlined in our code of conduct in our handbook. So it just kind of puts it all in one place, but makes it very, much more focused on cell phones. Now, a regulation does not require a school board vote, but we always like to, anytime we attach a regulation to a policy to make sure you're aware, get consensus and any feedback before we finalize it.
Yeah, I think it's a great approach and it gives us flexibility within the building to do what needs to be done, to adjust without having to make a policy change, which would be.
We're going to share this with parents.
Absolutely, yeah. Now, there's a section eight that I do want to draw your attention to because in all the guidance, it says this was in an area that's been heavily controversial in certain, in some school districts. But there are additional considerations that we need to be mindful of. So there may be additional restrictions that need to be administered in alternative education settings. But also students may, on the flip side of that, students may need to use cell phones for specialized circumstances, certain accommodations or health monitoring purposes. So any of those, they will be, of course, permitted to use their cell phone in accordance with a proper I E P 504 healthcare plan.
They need a 504 or I E P for that?
They need a certain documentation.
Or does he have a medical issue?
Yes, so a healthcare plan.
Healthcare plan.
Yes, healthcare plan.
Meaning check your blood sugar.
Absolutely, yeah. And those our school nurse has on file for all students who may need that. But just making sure there's a protection and understanding that that is in there for those students.
It's a great approach. I'm really pleased with how we implemented something. Be a positive experience for everybody, I hope, I hope.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the education sort of business, so it's good to educate. And it's going to be changing, you know, again and again throughout this year. Just when you think, just a year, over a year ago, there wasn't really anything like, what is on this phone now? So, and it's going to continue to change. We need to stay on top of it, really appreciate that we're getting that.
Those little Faraday bags, what were they called again?
Yonder.
Yonder bags. They're fabric, they're the size of a large cell phone, right? About this thick. And the amount of administration required to get students to get through a line, turn their phone off, stick it in the bag, seal the bag up. And it was, at the end of the day, to unwrap, unwrap all of that.
Probably more instructional time than using a phone.
And the assumption of.
Huge hit.
We can see that making an assumption of guilt is not what we need to do with our population at school.
So I would expect that the model that we have and the education is probably something that's going to start to take off and be repeated.
Copyrighted.
Well done. Well done.
All right, continuing on some positive news here. The Fit Kids Clinic update. Pull that up really quick. So as you know, the Fit Kids Clinic has had quite a few different iterations over the years and we have completely implemented the urgent care model now in the clinic. We have consistency. We have our tele presenter, Tara Prince here. If you'd like to come up to the podium and she can give us a little bit further of an update. And she's been the feet on the ground, you know, so been doing a great job.
Hello, I'm Tara Prince. I am the telehealth presenter. And we have been doing really well, especially since October. We've been seeing a lot more students and staff. So people are starting to find out about it, learn, you know, that it's not just students that can be seen, the staff can be seen as well. And we're really coming along. I'm excited.
She's doing a great job creating relationships with students. She's always there to help out with the nurses clinic as well. And as you can see in the patient counts here today, data, thank you for collecting that. It's very important, since August, we've really. It's very important. Since August, we've really picked up the pace in October, November. Of course, you know, we kind of expect that cold flu season and all that. But it's been great. I've used it as a parent a couple of times already. And it's been very convenient. Whether or not can my kids stay in school or not? Do I have to, you know, pick up the medicine after school? So Tara's been very responsive and the data's looking much more promising. These are much higher numbers consistently than we've seen since we've started the clinic.
Wonderful.
We are very happy about that.
I'm sure that's reflected in the number of days kids are missing school as well.
Definitely, yeah, because previously and historically, you would pick up your kid that showed symptoms and
Or all three.
Bring them to, or all three, because I can't get back in time for the bus. You know, so that's what was sixty percent of the driving force of all the chronic absenteeism in the elementary school. So that's a big reason why we set up the clinic. So that certainly has been helping. I can attest to that. I brought my child first thing in the morning just to make sure that she could continue on to school. Did have to pick up something after school for her for medication, but all set to go. That was great. Didn't have to miss time.
The testings are quick, within five minutes.
What are you, what are you able to test for?
We test flu, COVID, a lot of strep testing here recently with the weather. And then we can do urine testing. And I also have it set up through LabCorp to where if we need any cultures done, they are sent through there. And then I get them back within a week. We're trying to get that to be a little quicker, but but yeah, it's very, very good.
Great, great that you can do a strep test.
Yeah, yeah. This time of year, especially that and flu. So it's, it's really convenient. Or a lot of bronchitis, those kind of things, all of the instruments that we're able to use. And then the doctor, the connection with the new system is wonderful. We're staying connected. So it's really, really helping. And whatever I can listen to and hear, and the students are really excited, actually, to see their eardrum when I put the scope in their ear. They're not as scared, you know, to get things and the testing done and so. And they feel a lot easier if the parent can be there. And then the parents are like, you can just call me. Or we actually can do it by video. They can do it on iPhones or their cell phones. And they'll be on the screen if they can't make it to the clinic. So they're able to know exactly, ask the doctor questions. We get a school note if we need it. Everything's done right then and there. And it's just been a wonderful solution. And it's great for the teachers too. They can finish doing their classes or if they can and then just go to the pharmacy when they're done and pick it up and come back tomorrow. So it's been a wonderful experience and I, I love it.
Oh, that's good.
It's good too.
Any questions for Tara?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Now, we also have an exciting collaboration with Rapid Home in regards to our Fit Kids Clinic. So Joyce Wanger and Bob Ritchie are here to talk to you about that collaboration and how that's going.
Thank you for having me speak. You may wonder why Rapid Home, which deals with seniors in the community, what that has to do with children at Rapid Hennick Schools. But I want to talk about our health initiative and I will eventually get to how that's gonna relate to the school system. We all recognize that we have limited resources and poor access to healthcare here in Rapid Hennick. Within Rapid Home Strategic Plan, we've been in existence for almost ten years now. And healthcare was something we always wanted to address. At first, we addressed things like transportation, visiting older adults and a lot of other things that were important. But a couple of years ago, we started to really then focus on healthcare. We had a group of Rapid Home volunteers, a medical doctor, emergency room physician, a registered nurse, an attorney who specialty is hospital finances, an attorney who specializes in Medicare and Medicaid and fire and rescue and some others in the community on a volunteer basis worked with us. We got together with various other people in the community for meetings to kind of assess the situation, understand better what was going on, what we could do. We talked with people in other county, in other rural counties, what they were doing. We visited other rural areas. We looked at various clinics, pharmacies, talked with different EMS folks in other places. And through a grant, we were able to hire a consultant. And all of this work ended up this last July with us winning a federal government grant. And that has enabled us to do even more. The grant, we call it our HERSA grant. That's an administration of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And the grant is for a year. It's for us to develop a network and develop a plan and how we can improve the healthcare situation in Rapid Hennick County. The network includes a number of partners and I'll pass around that list in just a minute so you can see that. But it's important because not a single organization or a single organization in the nearby regions can solve all the problems unless we work together. And HERSA recognized that we have to work together to solve some of this. So there's collaboration and there's plans. At the end of our year, we have to have a strategic plan of how we're going to solve some of these issues. There's also follow on implementation funding from HERSA if we're successful. And other grant, grantees in the past have received additional follow on money. Our current grant has enabled us to hire Bob, and if you'll raise your hand, Bob. He is running this program for, for us now. He's relatively new, which is why I'm here today. In the future, he may be speaking with you. He has twenty five years of experience managing federal programs, big programs with multiple partners. He's worked in the Middle East and Africa. His programs focus on livelihoods, community outreach, capacity building, local governments, infrastructure and education. And he and his wife live in Luray right now. We are working this program mostly with volunteers. We're, we're using volunteers from a lot of other organizations and the other partners and then a lot of Rapid Home volunteers who are continuing to work on this. The partners are significant. I'm gonna pass around the list of partners so I don't have to read through this, all of this list. But Rapid Home is leading this effort and we're facilitating it and we hope over time that we have less of a role and that the medical agencies and organizations play more of a role. The Public Schools is already a partner in this program and I will come back to that shortly. We have the two nearest hospitals, Valley Health and UVA Hospital, our partners. EMS, county EMS is a partner and a number of other organizations that do provide medical services. So some of the projects that we're looking at as part of our strategic plan that we're developing, one is the expansion of this school clinic that Tara just talked about. And I'm gonna come back to that because we want to make sure you're aware of what we're thinking of and we want to get your input and thoughts before we go forward with, with any additional plans. Another area that's really important is paramedicine with EMS and fire and rescue. And right now, our EMS and fire and rescue, when they're not driving an ambulance, there, there's a lot of downtime where they're sitting and waiting. So we're proposing that they become trained, are able to do more medical sorts of things in that downtime. And we're actually working right now on a, another grant from HERSA that's due at the end of January, where we would get additional funding, probably going directly to the county EMS to hire some part time staff, purchase a software system that will let the partners involved in that particular activity communicate among each other. And part of what we're trying to do is, is help individuals in their homes with things like changing bandages or looking at their medications or checking their, their sugar levels or whatever kinds of things that paramedics can do. We're hoping we can help individuals. We hope that we have fewer nine one one calls, reduced hospital recidivism, those kinds of things. So that's one major project that we're moving forward on. We're looking at pharmacies and I put that in quotes because it may not be a full fledged pharmacy. It may be a different level of pharmacy. We're working in coordination with EMS. We want to work in coordination with the school clinic. So we're hoping to develop something in that area. Telemedicine is another area we're focusing on. That links to almost everything we're doing or thinking of doing and planning to do. And even links into individuals that have enough access within their homes to be able to do that. We're looking at ways to attract primary care physicians to our region. And there's a couple of real specific things we're working with, a couple of specific factors to make that happen. The Free Clinic, which used to be here in Rapid Hennick and has moved to Clark here, they're interested in expanding back into Rapid Hennick more. So there's room for them. All of these potential projects actually do relate and interconnect. And then additionally, we want to, as we go forward down the road, we're talking maybe a year or even, you know, we don't know how long this is all going to take, but we want additional partners to be part of all of this. So look at other social determinants of health and work on social issues, nutrition issues, exercise issues and all of those kinds of things that we all know contribute to health. So moving on then to this expansion of the school clinic. You know what you're doing right now. We want to expand that in a gradual and slow manner. First of all, we wanted to begin a short term pilot, which would cost nothing extra to anybody. At this point, we want to fit this into Tara's schedule. When she has some downtime, we want to have a small number of selected individual seniors that Rapid Home will help to identify and our partners, DSS and others can help to identify. And that they can make appointments with Tara on short notice when she has openings and has some available time. And we hope that we, we still have a lot of the details to work out. We may want to use a separate entrance for adults. We've already coordinated with Valley Health so that the doctors who are tied into this program at the other end of the telemedicine program, they are available for longer hours than the school system is open. So they're available. So we're looking at, at really building that as a pilot, as a small step, just to see how it would work and iron out some of those details. Then we want to look at additional grant funding for the future. And we want to look at providing additional services, expand beyond the urgent care, expand into testing for diabetes, cholesterol, EKGs, those kinds of things. We also want to look at services on weekends and evenings and that will be an additional cost. Tara doesn't work on weekends and evenings. So we're looking at grants and we are keeping our consultants on board. They have a lot, they specifically focus on rural health consulting. So they've been a great service for us in helping us find some of these additional grant opportunities. Our long term wish for all of this, if we don't have any idea how long this might take, how it might happen, where it might happen, but we hope we can get a real full clinic here in Rapid Hennick with a doctor associated with it in addition to a nurse and, and can really build that into something serving not just Rapid Home, older adults, but serving the whole community of Rapid Hennick. And we think we've got some good plans, a lot of good people involved in planning this and moving it forward. So what I wanted to be sure is that all of you are aware of this. And if you have any thoughts and ideas or concerns, even if they come up and you're thinking tonight and tomorrow, let us know if you're Shannon or you're me or however, we, we really want to make this work. This, the room we're using now may not ultimately be the location where this all happens. It's convenient to have this here at the school. That could mean another building. There's other buildings in the, in the community that will be available over time. So a lot of things come to play as we move forward with this and we don't really know how it's gonna turn out. When we started this whole initiative three years ago, we had no idea what was, what we were going to come up with. And we now have, you know, a half dozen really solid ideas that we really do think can happen. So any questions?
I know before the meeting started, I saw Shannon and Bob talking to one another. I'm sure something's happening already. So it's good to have the conversation. I appreciate you coming and telling us your plans. That's good.
Thank you very much then. And if you do have anything following this meeting, just let us know. We'll, we'll address questions.
Anyone else have any questions?
For now, it's, for sure, there's a lot, it's a lot to take in.
It's a bold initiative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then four point three, financial audits.
Interesting.
So we put this here because of course, according to code section fifteen point two dash twenty five eleven, we have to. But also it's a way that I get to brag on our amazing bookkeeper, Gail Chekai, who once again has had a completely clean audit, moving so many of those activity funds through and making sure they balance perfectly and all the documentation. It's a huge task, especially with over half a million dollars in activity funds flowing through those schools, all cash, all receipted, all fundraising. It's incredible. It's a, it's a huge job. So thank you, Gail, for everything that you do. It's a great audit. So we appreciate that.
Thirty five school audits and never had one this clean, ever.
And she does it consistently every year. And also to Stacy Witt, our CFO for the county audit, and all of that is here as well. The county report, perfectly clean audit as well. So our finance ladies are amazing.
They are. Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes the reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. Moving on to headquarter representative, Ms. Fino.
Let's see, it's a brief update. I wanted to remind everybody that the end of after school is actually this coming, this coming Thursday, so on the twelfth. So from four to five thirty, everybody's invited to come to see what they've been up to and it's always a really cool thing to see. So it's four to five thirty in the elementary school. And an hour after that, you can just stay and go to the band concert. It's like a beautiful evening.
The band concert starts at
At six thirty, so you didn't have a little time?
Six or six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty band, yeah, four to five thirty.
On Thursday.
On Thursday, yep. Yeah, and then there's an update on the scholarships. Before winter break, Headwaters will be presenting high school students with information about this year's scholarships, including essay prompts so that they can get started on their scholarship essays, maybe before winter break, who knows? Scholarship applications will be, will open just right as the new year starts. And there's, I think you're gonna have a SIF update later on, is that correct? So Headwaters have been keeping accounts of some generous donations towards the, towards the lobbyist services.
We're getting close?
I have, I have a number that might not be exactly
It's half, right about half.
Yeah, it's, it was close, it was a little over fourteen thousand. I don't think that's current anymore. So it's been promising. And that's my report.
Thanks.
It sounded like the, the county board was willing to chip in a few bucks too, if that's necessary.
At least one of them.
At least one of them.
Yeah, I think if we go back and
No, really, it was all a collaboration between, yeah, and we have, we can talk about that under new business.
MBGS, Mr. Groff?
We meet Thursday, so we don't, we don't have anything for you.
All right, informational items. The statements of economic interest, which we do every year, are due by, what, probably the January meeting?
If you can, that'd be great. They're due February first.
Oh, February first, good. All right, and is there any board member like to report out how, what, what we might have seen interesting while we were in Williamsburg? This time, we were in Williamsburg, November, I don't remember, sometime in the middle of November.
For twenty four, thirty four, five. Right around Thanksgiving.
Yeah, a week from court.
Anything you want to mention?
I'm complete.
The, the artificial intelligence piece and how other school boards are looking at that and how you need to be looking at that and how, you know, basically how we're gonna have to adjust the assignment for the technology. And then also, you know, decide where we are as far as with students using it. That was really particularly fascinating. And that's gonna continue to be a speeding moving bullet, just like the cellphone stuff. So we're just gonna have to keep our eye on it because it's rolling right up and it's fast. Yeah.
Yeah, one, one app that they highlighted in that was Khanego, through people who make Khan Academy and and it's one that unlike ChatGPT, it's supposed to be accurate and not hallucinate, which seems really great for teachers. You know, so, so the last year, I went to the AI, when they were like, yeah, it's a magic and hallucinates. So they'll say something that you know
Totally random, yeah.
But, but it's, it was really fascinating to see, and I looked at it a little bit afterwards, just how you can chunk up text or relate things to a third grade level or a fifth grade level or eighth grade level. It was, it is, it was interesting and it made, gave me hope. The last, last year, the AI made me feel fearful and hopeful that some really smart caring people are getting involved with it. And that makes me hopeful we can apply it in an intelligent way.
And that makes me hopeful we can apply it in an intelligent way. My exciting thing was having spoken at the trade show again with new young folks at Secure Solar Futures. And I explained how we had been so close, you know, a little bit less than a year ago to signing on with them. And we all, all of us who were there spoke with them a little bit. I'm hoping we can continue. I mean, one of the, one of the things they can help with is possibly roof, as well as, as well as a zero-cost test, solar panels. And then I was happened to read through an article just yesterday, today, about, and I forwarded it to you, Dr. Grimsley, about EVans that they can, that Secure Solar Futures leases. So it'd be interesting to talk, you know, we sometimes have trouble with having drivers. And these are, you know, large vans that can be driven without a CBL license. And they also, they have another, another rural county similar to ours has put them in GUs. So those two exciting things. I'm hoping we can, and I think there's agreement. I hope there's agreement that we can give it another running, jumping try.
So, yeah, it was an interesting conversation with them because we do have a roof project staring at, staring at us at the elementary. And doing some type of solar solution in conjunction with that could be good timing, number one, and could be zero cost based upon the fact we have put a new roof on anyway. And so they were going to communicate with us or with Dr. Bolt regarding the current roof structure. And, you know, underneath of that pitched roof is a flat roof that we covered up 25 years ago because it seemed to be a better solution. And then we didn't have enough money to put a metal roof on, so we shingled it like, oh, that's good enough. And then, and now here we are, here I am, sitting here talking about. Who were the, what was that board? Who was on that board that decided to shingles on that roof? So at the time, we did the best we could with what we had, though. Always do. It's not that we weren't conscious, it's we were doing the best we could. So, but it's time to look at it again, and I don't want to kick that can down the road again, so.
And again, an exciting aspect of solar is the CGE possibilities. And they had a good, you know, Wise County has a great CGE program that's tied with installing the solar. And they outfit the kids with everything they need to go on and are very much growing.
Install, maintain, tune.
Yeah, yeah, it's really.
Another trade.
Yeah, it's a trade. It's a very. I'm hoping that.
They're trying.
I feel like we've been almost there before, but I feel hopeful with these ingredients that we can be closer than ever before.
Me too.
A new capital improvement project of that magnitude is a great motivation to get around the table to think about ways to decrease that cost. So, and it is a significant cost for capital. So if that can help in any way, which it sounds like it can. So I'm really curious to see how, how that program's going to work, and we're pretty excited about it.
Anything else? We all went to the school law thing.
I was going to, I was going to mention.
So exciting. Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to mention, I was really happy we were not cited in that.
It is extraordinary. They're citing cases of various school districts around the state while, while they're actually in the room.
Yeah, and they have to go fast because of how many they have. So they're like trying to get through all of them. And yes, it's good not to be part of that list.
I was, I was happy to see that we were not in that list. And there was, you know, I went to the. Whatever that thing goes.
Congress, it's not called Congress, it's called.
The Delight.
The Delight, the Assembly, and it, it was, they actually passed nothing.
Oh, no.
And when they're.
Might be an improvement.
It wasn't an improvement. It was good. Got out at 3:00, so 4:30. So there was no arguments. It was all, all good.
And I already reported on the cell phone class, which was very good to see and see what's working, what's not working. And listen to the other school districts complaining about they're not, they weren't ready. What are they going to do? And they came there to figure out what they were going to do. Who could they imitate?
Well, the big ones have it tough.
They do.
I feel for, you've got six thousand kids.
Okay, I guess that's about it. Anything else? We're going to move on to public comments. Is anybody that would like to address the board this evening? Yes, Ms. Gano.
Lenny Jano, I'm Stonewall Hoffler. I'm actually here with my PTO hat on today. I didn't understand or know. I think that you guys have asked for PTO updates before. I'm currently the PTO vice president, so I just want to give you a quick, under three-minute update on what we do at PTO. As you know, we've done the fun run, our big field trip, or our big fundraiser that we do. Wanted to give you a quick update. We raised 25,000. We actually raised more like 28,000 last year. But we, our goal is 25 for field trips for pre-k through seventh graders. Giving some to the rising eighth graders because they helped us get it, and then we gave it to the pre-k's too. So we gave $2,500 to each class, except for the pre-k and the eighth, we gave them 1,500 each because they were, you know, on the tail ends. But we sadly, so far, we've only had them use about $3,000 and we're halfway through the school. So we're really needing to encourage them to actually, hey, do you want this money? Can you use it? Originally, we were kind of hesitant to want them to use it towards transportation. But now we're kind of like, okay, that's going to get you to DC, so you can go to a free zoo. Let's do that. So we have had field trips to JMU Planetarium, which is an awesome little one that they can get there back in the day. And it's only 60 bucks for like 75 kids if you ever need a, I'm sure. Visits to Farms, Massex and Graves, Frontier Discovery Museum, Riverside Dance, those are the ones we've had to use so far. And we're getting ready to kick off our next fun run. It won't be till March. March 24th is when we'll kick it off, and we'll have the fun run April 3rd. We currently are working on our theme. We're thinking we might do a new theme, maybe something local Rappahannock, something like kind of local theme. And then we really are kind of struggling as to what we need to buy, what we need the money for. So if anybody, I know that's a really dangerous thing to say here, so.
Got a new roof.
Yeah. One theme that we did want to point out is we would prefer not to raise money for capital funds, for things that probably, things like, in the past, we've done water fountains and playground equipment, which is stuff that goes above and beyond, we're cool with, we can ask parents for, but just basic stuff that probably should be covered. Or get a little, because we got hit with some water fountain requests recently, and we've got some emails going around. And I think it's, I think it's on everybody's radars now, but some of the ones over the elementary school really aren't working. And we, putting water is a granted thing for kids. It should be, like a bathroom. So we prefer not to do that kind of stuff. It's like something educational, something that pushes the status quo. So we are working on putting up a playground pavilion. Maybe some of you have seen that on the upper pavilion. Should be done the next few days. There is a 16 by 20 concrete stick-built pavilion, so the kids have something to go under. They're going to put, we're going to get some hopefully picnic benches. And then it's, yeah, like I said, it's concrete on the bottom and maybe some little bit of playground equipment up there too, because the sixth and seventh grade, you know, shares that. And then we've also got three benches. We're going to work on four, four of those plastic benches from Lyons that is helping us with the plastic collections. And we've gotten three now, and they've been really good at pushing us to the top of the line, so we can get them to go around the walking trail. Oh, awesome. Okay, yeah, we just got our third one, and we're, if anybody has a nonprofit that needs, has applied for one, let us know. Big thing is right now, we are neck-deep in holiday shop. We have just a little store that we set up, and it's the Grinch theme. If you go on Facebook, social media, you can see it, or talk to your kids, if you have anybody. It's huge. Our PTO president went above and beyond, and she brought, pretty much brought Who Bill to our school. And it's doing really good. It's not meant to be a fundraiser, but last year it did covers. It costs us about $4,500 to put it on. But when we buy all this stuff and the kids get to come, it's anywhere from $1 to $5, kids get to come buy stuff, and it's really heartwarming. I used to not be a fan of it, but then after working in it, you just wish you had hundreds of extra dollars to give this kid and this kid. And we do have a donation program where families can chip in five bucks to kids that don't have some. So we have that going, and we're actually getting a lot of volunteers. We have, we have more volunteers this year in our PTO than we've had ever seen in 20 years. I am really excited by that. We had probably 15 people setting up this Who Bill, which was just, the PTO president kept saying, I can't believe there's people there. I'm not doing it until 7:00 at night, you know? She, of course, but hours before that, but, so holiday shopping this week. And then we also are still working on our clothing cottages. We have these clothing cottages that are, one here at high school, one at elementary school, that are filled with donations that people have given. We used to get donations from Walmart. We're working on getting those back again of new clothing. We've got like formal wear, shoes, outerwear. We really don't have people asking for it. And then we just had recently a shop with a cop, and we've had these DSS angels, and we kind of, it seems to be some sort of disconnect. It's a little bit of a stretch for PTO to keep it up just with not having, usually the manpower. We're getting more of those people this year, but nobody's wanting to take it on totally. It's a big project, and so we're trying to see if we can't get community volunteers to come in. But we really need the word to go out that, hey, we, we have stuff discreetly. You can come in and shop and get stuff so we can kind of rotate it through, because our clothing cottages are only those big, the whole little.
And there was a house in Edmond that burned down.
Burned down, yeah.
There were family there. I don't know whether we could send them up here for.
And we could, yes. If you know somebody that knows them that wants to, I don't know if they have kids. They were, they were in our county.
They were two kids involved.
But they, I don't think they were in our county. Maybe they weren't in our schools. I'm not sure. Maybe by.
It's close. It might have been Madison. I don't know. It was right down there at the base of Old Red.
Right now, we're willing to do whatever, because having five kids, that is a huge chore to turn over every season. And you really can't store out and reading people hearing about it and wanting to donate. So we'd really like to move some stuff out too, and talk to maybe DSS or over at Food pantry, trying to work with them also. So that's our biggest update right now.
Thanks. That's exciting.
It is. Lots of good stuff.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. Anybody else this evening like to address the board? It's hard to follow her, isn't it?
Lots of good news.
Lots of good news. All right, moving on to new business. This is probably the right time to talk about what's happening with SIFT and where we're at in the life cycle of this pursuing of funds. I guess our thermometer is about halfway up as far as gaining the money that's required to continue the effort come January. Yesterday, Shannon and Mr. Curry and I went to Richmond to go to a joint, the joint subcommittee on like.
Elementary and secondary school.
Primary and secondary education. And, and boy, maybe glad I'm not there every day. But we got to watch these, this mix of senators and delegates working together to, to understand better the topic of education. And they're, and they established priorities, which I try not to get too hopeful because I've been knocked down too many times, right? But it seemed like they are ready to remove Depression era, or what do they call it, recession era caps, which is what was our original language. And we have, on that subcommittee, I think we have three champions and one opposite of champion. But we have three champions and.
And they are on the committee.
And they are on the committee. And so we, we had a, you know, it's a couple hours in the committee meeting. And then after it was all over, the most extraordinary thing happened in the hallway outside after the committee meeting's over, right? Where we're being idle in the hallway because that's what Elizabeth Parker said we're supposed to do. Brilliant lady. And Ham, Ham, was it Ham, Hamri?
Hashme.
Hashme. One of the senators, I think she's a doctor. Is she a doctor? Dr. Hashme came out and we were able to have a conversation with her, and she is going to be a huge advocate of ours as well. It's interesting because Rappahannock came up numerous times in the joint subcommittee meeting.
Got their attention.
And we did get their attention.
It's the only name they had to remember.
The last meeting they met, they had, they talked about the number of public comments that had been received through their online system. Over half of their total number of comments were from Rappahannock County. So we did our job. And so that got us on the radar at the last meeting, and this meeting it was brought up again. And Mr. Curry was actually on the agenda, and as he was getting ready to get up, as he was getting ready to get up, I want to tell a story on Elizabeth, who is basically the brains, you know, here's how this organism functions. And she is a tremendous help, making sure we do the right thing at the right time and not do the wrong thing. So Gary's on the agenda, Mr. Curry, and as he's getting ready to get up, she's telling him, you know, say this, don't say that, say this, say this and don't say that. And he's like, okay, 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 okay. And so he gets up and gives his, you know, 30 seconds for them. But it was good for us to be there. We were basically witnessing this process, but the pinnacle event really was in the hallway after the whole meeting was over, where we got to connect. And I do think we have some advocates, and we still stand a really good chance of getting exactly what we should be getting, with the cap removed.
What would be the timeline on that? When do we know something?
March. It's going to be way past our budget cycle again. We're not going to, we're going to end up going into our budget cycle knowing absolutely nothing, just like last year.
Last year.
And the year before, and the year before. So we're going to be planning as if we get nothing.
Right.
And, and plotting ahead. But anyway, from my perspective, it looks very promising. But I'm afraid, I'm cautiously optimistic because I'm afraid of falling too far down.
Well, what we know at this point is it's worth going forward. It's not going to be a, it doesn't have a chance kind of thing.
Right.
And that's what yesterday's adventure really told us. So that's a good thing, because we were, this was a pinnacle point in the process, and it went a certain way. It'd be like, let's not go after it this year, you know, so.
What was the objection of the foe?
So this is an interesting, so to build on what Wes was saying, the story with Mr. Curry was really kind of amusing because we had anticipated that one of the staffers would talk about fiscal stress analysis data, about how fiscally stressed Rappahannock really is, and if it's doing its job to fund services, including the schools. And according to their data, we're 122 in 133 districts fiscally stressed. And we were like, great, we want to be 122, because right now they're saying to us like we're 133, you know, so let's go with their data. But anyway, he, he spoke, our issue did not come up during the staffer comments. So Gary was poised to speak to that issue. So of course, at that point in time, Elizabeth says, you know, well, don't say anything, don't worry about it. He's like, well, I put my name in. What if they call my name? And right at that point, Mr. Curry, you're up first. So he goes, um, and as he's getting up, she's like, just say something nice. It was so funny. So he got, he did a wonderful job. Just thank the committee for, you know, all their work on this and paying attention to the data, and that Rappahannock does not, right, benefit from the fiscal stress analysis data or the LCI. And it's worth looking at. Thank you for doing it. But then our foe did have the staffer get back up and bring up Rappahannock specifically, saying that, you know, basically the same argument on paper, we're just too rich, we're not fiscally stressed enough, raise taxes, kind of thing, you know, that was the argument going forward. So we kind of knew that's what was going to happen. But the op-ed that Gary and I worked on for, for a long time really dives into all of those pieces. It's a complex issue, but we are very anomalous compared to anybody else in the Commonwealth. And that's what's really tough to understand. As a, I get it as a, you know, policymaker that it's really tough to understand, because everything that they have that has been tried and true and looks on paper, it does look that way. But then when you dig into it and really try to understand it. So we're really trying to get some legislators to come out here to see Rappahannock and see what we're talking about, how this data works.
They might find it really pretty, should be careful.
So we are working on that way, but hopefully we can, the person who seems opposed, I really do think has an intelligent perspective and hopefully can dig into it and understand where we're coming from.
He or she.
Name the person.
No, I don't, no, I don't care. I don't matter.
Same one that killed us last year. So we do have some, some strong advocates there, Dr. Hashme. She actually has a desire to come visit us, so we're going to try to get on her schedule. Oven Shane's sitting on there. He knows us from years ago. I don't know if you remember Oven Shane, but he's on that committee, which was good, and speaks friendly of us. Senator Boisco.
She knows us.
She knows us, and she knows a lot of our people, and she thinks very highly of our community. Delegate Bulova, B U L O V A.
From Arlington.
I don't know where he's from, but he's a, he's a fan of ours. So there's a, you know, there's an avenue for us to continue our argument. And there's, it's interesting, Ms. Parker would say, you know, there's, there's ways to get this done. And if you write a bill and it gets killed, you're done. So let's take this approach.
And she has a lot of like trigger points, like if this happens, then we do this. If this happens, then we're going to do this and this, but there's a way, you know, so I really like.
It's a.
It's optimistic.
It's a strategy we could never have conceived here.
No way.
Never.
It blows my mind, really.
The op ed was phenomenal.
It was.
Very, very good.
It was a good mix of words and graphics. It kind of kept me going like, oh, what's this mean? What's this mean? Where are we at? So, yeah. And there was a great argument on being, you know, one twenty-two. So the significance of one twenty-two is if we could get to one twenty-two, it's the same thing.
If they remove the supplemental basic A cap, it would put us right about there, what they say.
Which is all we were after anyway, so.
It's really interesting. It's fun.
I'll say it goes, it was, it was a good day. A good day and and we're still hopeful, so that's good. Cautiously optimistic.
Yes. Thank you for going. It's very exciting, very exciting.
Is there any other new business? Is there any requests for future agenda items at this point? Our next school board meeting is next year, January fourteenth, back in this very same room. Forward to seeing there is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move the board convening to closed session for the following purposes, discuss and consider the appointment of staff for qualified positions, coaching positions, and discussion of the superintendent's mid-year evaluation to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one pursuant to Virginia Code Section two two three seven one one A one.
We have a motion, Mr. Groves, or a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Huben on favor, I? And we'll be back in.
Cell phone policy will come to hand here.
How long will we be back?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. We'll be back in ten minutes if you want to hang out. If not, the boys are playing basketball.